Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall is absent. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, in his name, with all due respect and justice.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, CL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, the Star Ledger on January 7, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to the special event application.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The first application before you is from the New Jersey Veg Fest. And what they are asking for is an additional date to do, make their festival a two-day event. It would be May 14 and May 15. Next is the Universal African American Festival, which would be in Swingwood Park on July 2. And lastly, we have seven wedding applications from the Cloons. And as a point of record, although they filled out the old application with the old fees, they have paid the new fees, which are $500 per wedding. Are there any questions? Thank you.
We are now on to items to be presented. We have a presentation from the Garden State Film Festival regarding their 20th anniversary.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
I'm Diane Raeger. I'm the founder of the Garden State Film Festival. This is our wonderful Lauren Tomkarshie, who is now the executive director. And we are here to celebrate the 20th anniversary of the Garden State Film Festival. Those of you who remember.
Yeah.
And we just want to tell you that in 2020, Lauren and I came here and said, "The show will go on." And by the next morning, we were toast. Ten days later, when it was time to present, this young lady and the young people that surround me, God bless them, built an entire virtual platform. We were the first in the world to go virtual, and we were the first in the world last year to go hybrid. I can take no credit for it, but what a wonderful legacy to give to our city that we love so much. So, did you want to play?
Sure. Yeah, there's a little quick promo. There's some music that might be loud. You might not know, we started out in kitchen table, and here we are 20 years later, thanks to Diane Raeger, it was her baby that I carried, and we're thrilled. So, we're here the 23rd to the 27th of March, but we accidentally made us 12 days.
All the films will be available the week after video on demand, so that we aren't trying to do two at the same time, we learned our lesson last year. So, everyone will have access. You may have noticed we've added in Cranford. We did that because to become an academy-qualified festival, you have to screen in a real, I don't know, the-
Theatrical release theater.
Theatrical release theater. So, after this year, we'll apply for Academy Award qualification, and we will bring back to Asbury Park a legacy that, of course, you know, Walter Reed had for so many years. And that is the reason. And it, of course, gives us a further breadth in the state for more funding, which, of course, we need desperately. So, thank you, all of you, to have supported us for the last 20 years, and we're fleet shortly, you know, folks who've seen me do my, strut my stuff for 20 years, and to this wonderful lady who's carrying the mantle forward. Thank you all for your support, and I hope to see you all at the show.
Thank you. So, we have just got first lady Tammy Snyder Murphy is our honorary chair. So, all we need now are the stars somewhere on Cookman.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We should get a thing going where we have stars for-
And have them while we're here, yeah, while they're here. So, we will send you more information, but we look forward to seeing you. We're at the Asbury Leans, Asbury Hall. We take over to Berkeley and Jersey Shore Arts Center.
And Jersey Shore Arts Center, right.
Yeah, so we're thrilled.
Fantastic.
Mean and mean this year, but yeah.
Hey, can we play that one more time, just because it was short, so people on TV world can see it again? I'm sorry.
Well, we'll add it to the thing, Mayor. We'll have it in the, when we post it on YouTube.
I know, but Michael can figure it out.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
No, congratulations both.
Thank you so much.
Yay.
And while everybody else is postponing and canceling, we just keep going.
They're still doing it.
Oh, we have a fantastic billboard, "Sorry," in Philadelphia, and, you know, we'll have lots of people in hotels like this.
Yes, we're, we're, and the ticket sales is off the chart this year. I don't know how that happened, but-
Good.
Last year was dismal. This year, like, I think we're going to be sold out. So, if you want to come, please get a ticket sooner than later.
And if anybody needs any information, gsff.org?
Yes.
You're hired, yes.
Again, thank you both, and congratulations, and best of luck, and looking forward to seeing you. Thank you.
We will now be on matters from City Council. Councilmember Chapman.
So, tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, Yvonne Clayton and I will be hosting Coffee with the Councilperson at Busker Do at 10 o'clock. So, if anybody has any questions or concerns, come by and see us there. We do that periodically, and it's always a great opportunity from us to get feedback from our residents. Additionally, Asbury Park is starting a junior guard program. The six-week training program runs from June 27 to August 5. It's open for children ages 10 to 15, free for Asbury Park residents. The registration deadline is June 15 at cityofasburypark.com/juniorguard. That's it.
Councilmember Clayton.
Good evening. Just want to let everyone know that the city is starting their summer hiring. So, if you're interested in a summer job on the beach, you can go to the city website, which is cityofasburypark.com/jobs, or you can call 732-502-5715. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Nothing, Melody.
Mayor Moore.
The only thing I have is Garden State Film Festival. G S F F dot org. Again, thank you. That's all I have.
Matters from City Manager.
Nothing, Melody.
Matters from City Attorney.
And nothing at this time of year.
We are on to the public participation portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now open to the public. Anyone who wishes to be heard, please go to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each speaker will have three minutes.
Hello, my name is David Bedola. I live at 908 Fifth Avenue.
If you feel more comfortable, you can take down your mask.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. John Moore, sorry. A letter has been given to the city clerk and to each of the board members, council members. We have over 72 signatures so far on our letter, and we have other people that are going to be signing soon. So, to start, on December 22, 2021, the city council referred a redevelopment area plan for 1201 Memorial Drive to the planning board for review. We acknowledge the legal right of the city council to create and amend redevelopment area plans to meet the city's planning goals. Furthermore, we commend the city council for taking a proactive approach to addressing housing affordability and economic diversity within our community. However, the current redevelopment planning process and the proposed regulations for 1201 Memorial Drive have raised concerns among residents in the adjacent neighborhoods. We respectfully ask that you consider the following issues as you carry this and other redevelopment planning initiatives forward. Number one, commit to a transparent and engaged redevelopment process. Unlike other actions related to zoning, there is currently no mechanism to alert the public or adjacent property owners when the city council creates or amends redevelopment area plans. The creation of a redevelopment area plan for 1201 Memorial Drive came as a complete surprise to many who will be directly impacted by a development on this site. From the standpoint of transparency and community engagement, prior notification and direct opportunities for public input before matters are referred to the planning board are the best to ensure equitable outcomes for residents affected by redevelopment area plans. Therefore, we ask the city council to pass a resolution that requires public notice for property owners within 200 feet and specific opportunities for public input at the city council when creating or amending all redevelopment area plan. And number two will be-
Good evening. Polly Shulga, 1100 Fifth Avenue, continuing the letter. Number two, adopt the recommendations of the city park, of the Asbury Park Planning Board for the 1201 Memorial Drive redevelopment area plan. The planning board discussed the 1201 memorial redevelopment area plan at their meetings on January 26 and February 7, 2022. Subsequently, they delivered a report to the city council with recommendations for site and building design parameters for the 1201 memorial redevelopment area plan. As they noted, the increased density proposed for 1201 memorial drive makes it critical to include residential density, building height, building massing, parking, and site circulation parameters that blend new development with adjacent neighborhoods. The city council still has the opportunity to incorporate these recommendations into the proposed redevelopment area plan for 1201 memorial drive. Therefore, we ask that you adopt the recommendations of the planning board, including but not limited to maintain the east-west view corridor and recognize the historical development patterns by aligning new development with prevailing building setbacks on Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue. This approach is consistent with the citywide historical development patterns and the building that previously stood at 1201 Memorial Avenue, Memorial Drive. Blend new development into the neighborhood by allowing greater height along Memorial Drive with transitions in building height heading west on Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue. In addition, maintain a 25-foot setback from all side and rear property lines when adjacent to residential uses. Manage the impact of vehicular traffic by prioritizing Memorial Drive for site entry/exit and prohibit trash, utility, and service areas within side rear yard setbacks. Improve pedestrian connectivity and retail continuity by requiring active ground floor uses, retail, office, commercial, et cetera, with priority given to the corners of Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue. If this city council does not adopt the planning board recommendations at this stage, the ability of the public or the planning board to achieve outcomes that balance the impacts of the new development with neighborhood character will be severely diminished. It's not too late to assure an equitable outcome that blends new development with the existing neighborhood context. Thank you.
Hi, Catherine Minervini, 1012 Fifth Avenue. I'll be reading the third point of our letter from the neighborhood. Develop a comprehensive planning and urban design strategy for the Memorial Drive corridor and adjacent neighborhoods. The primary purpose of zoning is to assure predictable outcomes that conform to the goals of the city's master plan. At the January 26, 2022, meeting of the planning board, the city planner testified that the use of the redevelopment area plans is likely to increase in the coming years. While redevelopment area plans are an important tool available to the city council, they should not be the default mechanism for including development. Instead, relying on redevelopment area planning for piecemeal development suggests the underlying zoning is not sufficient to induce as-of-right development that meets the publicly supported goals of the city's master plan. We also feel that even the existing zoning along Memorial Drive lacks adequate design controls to assure as-of-right development response to the character and form of the adjacent neighborhoods. Furthermore, the existing single-family zoning adjacent to Memorial Drive prohibits nearly all property owners from contributing to housing supply, even though they are already a reservoir for multifamily housing. A comprehensive approach to the area would allow gentle density throughout the neighborhood to meaningfully address housing supply and provide a transition from more dense areas along Main Street and Memorial Drive. Therefore, to assure more predictable outcomes, to holistically advance the goals of the city's master plan, and to reduce the reliance of redevelopment area plans, we ask the city council to direct the planning board and city planning department to develop a comprehensive zoning framework for Memorial Drive and the adjacent neighborhoods that creates predictable outcomes for incentivizing as-of-right development rather than piecemeal redevelopment area plans, offers that offers appropriate incentives for inclusionary, inclusionary affordable housing, that increases housing supply and distributes residential density by allowing accessory dwelling units and other gentle density measures in appropriate areas, that manages vehicular traffic and prioritizes pedestrian safety through a comprehensive approach to parking and circulation, and addresses sustainability, resiliency-
One minute remaining.
-and environmental needs. Thank you.
Hi, Eric Galloto, 908 Fifth Avenue. I think most of you probably know me. Good evening, councilors. I've spoken to most of you directly recently, and while I'm a member of the planning board, I speak tonight as a concerned citizen, a longtime resident, someone who cares as much as you do about a city that I have called home since I was eight years old. I'm an urban design and planning professional with 20 years of experience and a member of the Maryland Institute of Certified Planners. My opinions are my own and meant to encourage a transparent redevelopment process that provides meaningful opportunities for public input and balances new development with existing neighborhoods. With that said, my two-family home shares a rear and side property line with 1201 Memorial Drive, the subject of the redevelopment area plan proposed by the city council. I learned to ride a bike in the parking lot of 1201. I remember when it was the social securities office, when it was a methadone clinic, and when it was abandoned and treated as a public toilet by cab drivers until the building was demolished in 2020. It stands to reason that few others have a greater desire to see this site developed and returned to active use, and that my family and our tenants will be impacted by the development for the rest of our lives. I vocally support the council for addressing the critical need for housing within our community. Nothing I say should be construed as an argument against the creation of more housing, either market rate or affordable, or the density required to make it happen. The need for affordable housing options in our community is acute, and the city council should be using all of the tools at their disposal to address our housing shortage. After all, the best way to end a housing crisis is to build more housing. In my personal and professional opinion, however, the proposed regulations for 1201 do not employ adequate architectural or site design controls to mitigate the visual and practical impacts of the development with a density that can exceed what is currently permitted by many multiples. There is a saying among planners that goes, "If all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail." In other words, success for this site is being defined too narrowly, and many of the most effective tools to mitigate the impacts of new development, to increase housing choice, and shape equitable outcomes are being left in the toolbox. This goes well beyond the inadequate design parameters proposed for 1201 memorial. That is to say, there's a fundamental dissonance between allowing 120 units at 1201 and recently reenacting restrictive zoning in an adjacent neighborhood that prevents the creation of even a single new unit of housing. It is more confounding when you consider these neighborhoods have long been reservoirs for multifamily housing without creating significant visual or practical impacts for their surrounding. In fact, restrictive zoning throughout the city overburdened sites like 1201 to be the sole solution to an affordable housing crisis that exists citywide. You cannot be a champion of affordable housing and an enemy of well-designed gentle density. A comprehensive zoning and urban design framework for the area is the best way to create predictable outcomes based on meaningful public input, economics, and urban design analysis rather than relying on piecemeal, single-site development plans. I thank you all for the service that you do to our community every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. Mr. Mayor, Michael Christian, 1100 Fifth Avenue. I come up here tonight with no prepared statement. But what I want to do is I definitely want to voice my support for the recommendations of the planning board on 1201 Memorial Drive. I sincerely hope that the, that the city council takes them into consideration. In fact, personally, I don't think they go far enough. I think that the, the commercial space on either corner is really not adequate. I think it should be, the entire front of Memorial Drive should have, should have retail space. Because I think one thing this piecemeal development really doesn't take into account is the holistic look of what we see in Memorial Drive moving forward. What, what Memorial Drive be for Asbury Park? And I think that when you have this kind of piecemeal development, and I'm learning as I go here as a newer homeowner in my life and here in Asbury Park, is that it's really not taking the big picture into consideration. The other point I wanted to make is the density issue that Eric referred to. Someone told me and described it to me as you're going to have 30% more units in this space in maybe five stories than the Santander, which is nine stories. And you're inserting this high-density project into a very low-density neighborhood, because everything surrounding it, behind it, on the sides of it, are neighborhoods. And to Eric's point, as a homeowner, I take, I take offense to the fact that this could be done without my say-so, and I can't even build a, a apartment unit on top of my garage. Lastly, I consider all of you my neighbors, and I just don't feel real neighborly right now from you, because I just got this sense of a lack of transparency. I know David referred to it when he first started reading this letter. We just seem like we find out about these things when they've already progressed so far through the process. In fact, not knowing how the mechanism works, I would think that you would have staff on city, on the city payroll that would have the skill set to look at a proposal like this, being so egregiously ridiculous and ugly, that it wouldn't even get as far as it is right now. And I understand, I even came to this, to the planning board with maybe seven days left in, in the lead time. So, it just seems like we're kind of in the dark on these things, and as a resident, I'm not comfortable with that, and I think there's got to be a larger public involvement here, and not just those who are 200 feet away, because this probably is going to affect all of us in the city. So, that's my thoughts. I thank you for the service you do, and thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Peter Siegel, 1412 Main Street. I want to commend my neighbors on their very articulate and well-written letter that I heard for the first time tonight. I couldn't help but notice that they mentioned several times a recurring theme, which is that they were talking about the much-needed housing supply in our city, and that's the, the main way that you attack housing unaffordability is by introducing new supply. And I just want to thank them for writing that, because I couldn't agree more. You can't address housing affordability or unaffordability by legislating it. You have to address it by introducing new supply. It's the only way. It's, it's simple math, and I commend them for pointing that out. So, on that note, I'm here to ask a couple of questions about our new rent control ordinance, newly amended rent control ordinance. The first is, a few weeks ago, it was brought to the attention of the city that there were multiple hundreds of tenants that had objected to their personal information having been disclosed as part, as part of the registration requirement of this ordinance, and that certain aspects of the registration requirement were controversial and possibly illegal. So, I, I didn't get a response from that, and as a property owner and a housing provider and someone who's got to register, my tenants who are now objecting to that, I want to know if there's a response that we can get so that I know how to proceed. And if I can get a response, that would be great. Number two, can someone answer that?
Finished.
Yeah. Number, number two, I've identified four buildings that I own that I've got an application pending with DCA for conversion to condominiums. So, I want to know if there is a possible exemption for those four buildings that I'm converting to condos as a result of the ordinance requiring me to register, if I can be exempt from registering the units in those four buildings if there's a pending application to convert.
Are you done?
I am, thank you.
Okay. The second question I can't answer, Donna, if you know the answer, if not, we'll get back to you.
I would, I would suggest that you put your request in writing to my attention. I'll forward it on to the rent levelling attorney.
Okay.
Right. Something like that later in the future, if you want to, like, give it to us the day before, then maybe we could have an answer for you tonight. As far as, I guess it was two meetings ago, you gave us a list of 200 and some people saying, "I do not want my personal information disclosed by my landlord." And I believe everything that is being asked to be disclosed is already on the DCA reports. And as much as, like, everybody signed this-
No, it's not.
Okay, you're done. You're done.
My, I still have time.
I asked if you were done, and you said yes. So, I don't care what that says. Sorry, you're done.
You just said something that wasn't true.
You can correct me next meeting. Ron can talk for you, as you, whatever. So, I believe, like, this is something like-
John, Ron doesn't talk for me. I just want an honest answer.
Peter, I, I said you were done. I asked you if you were done, and you said, "Yes, you were done." I mean, so, again, okay. I don't want to say anything more untrue, but I'll put out a survey tomorrow. Everybody in this room, raise your hands if you don't want to pay federal income tax. And everyone's going to raise their hand. So, I mean, this was like, just like a question, like, who doesn't want to share personal information? And it's a good question, and I think everybody should sign it. The fact that you only got 200 signatures is, you should have gotten 2,000. So, I think that answered, much of what I'm going to answer that question. Thank you.
It didn't answer my question. I'll ask it again next time.
Good.
Ron Simoncini, Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition.
Address?
Address.
301 Route 17, North Rutherford. I, I didn't plan on talking about conversion, but it brings it to an interesting point. When I started consulting on rent control in Hoboken in 2001, there were about 9,500 rent control units, and about 3,500 of them were in two-to-four-family homes, old, developed by largely immigrant populations back in the day, became family homes, and now there are less than 400. Those homes were all converted to single-family homes, and they were converted to condominiums. And certainly, I think that the people we're hearing from the last couple of weeks haven't, at the Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition, have not been the large property owners who are in frequent contact with, the people who didn't expect to be under rent control, who are now under rent control, and that's their family asset. That's their, like, one big family asset, and they've got family members living in the third or fourth unit, and maybe one or two people that they don't, aren't related to. And so, when you look at, like, this was my retirement asset, this is something that I can borrow against, this is something that I value, it just got diminished in value substantially. And, and then, the other thing was, of course, you have this huge inflation now, not just inflation in costs for people, but inflation in salaries. People are making more money. There are almost twice as many jobs available in America today as there are unemployed people. And so, you have this huge escalation of cost and huge escalation of income and opportunity, not for everybody, but for most people. And so, you took the CPI out of the ordinance, and you favored a much smaller annual increase than the cost increase will be. So, those poor folks who now got included in an ordinance, they didn't think they'd be included, are having the value of their asset deleted from them two different ways at the same time. They're going to convert, or they're going to sell big, single-family homes. So, all those neighborhoods you're trying to protect, you thought you were, those are going to be gone, just like Hoboken. The other thing I just want to mention is that on the notice, we came in a few weeks ago and asked to notice electronically. It was such a mess that we developed our own online tool, which you should have done. You should have let people notify you electronically, and you should have allowed tenants to opt into that yourself. We developed, we developed it ourselves, paid for ourselves. So, we're going to make that available to all of our members at no cost, and anybody else who wants to participate in this idea that they can notify you electronically can have our tool if they join us. The only other thing I would, I would look at is the idea when I was here last time, and I said, "There's no form that says tenant notification form." And Mayor, you looked at your, at your administrator and said- And Mayor, you looked at your administrator and said, "Is there a form?" And she looked at the computer and said, "Yes, there is." The very next day at the rent control meeting where you were, the rent control administrator admitted there was no form. Now, everybody can make a mistake, and that's not really the issue here. The issue here is, this is important stuff. I know I'm past my time, but you can't make that kind of mistake habitually with this rent control ordinance and not expect people to go, "What are you doing?"
Okay. Finish your sentence. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Rita?
Hi. I have one question.
Your name and address, Rita.
Oh, Rita Moreno, 504 Eighth Avenue. I have one question. Does anybody know how many affordable housing units we have in Asbury? I mean, like, we should have some facts here. I tried to look them up, and boy, you can't get anybody on the phone. Nobody. Nobody in this building, nobody in the state building, nowhere. Housing Authority, nowhere. But I did find out a little information. We have 1,179 low-income housing. We also have 798 section eights. And then we have another 700 of, I don't know what they call it, it's another name for rental assistance. How many things do we have in one little square mile? Plus all the nonprofits and everything, how can anybody live here? It's getting out of control. And you call the city manager's office, and she said, "If you want to talk to the engineer, call this extension." Well, what's the engineer doing here? I thought that was a private company. I mean, you call all these numbers, and the only number that answers is the city clerk's office. Everybody else is out of touch with reality. I don't know where they are, but nobody answers in this building, and that's unheard of. They can't be working eight hours a day. I know that. You ought to get an incentive man in here to see how many hours you really work. And the other thing is, Washington's birthday, Lincoln's birthday, the state of New Jersey doesn't honor it, the state doesn't, the state, the federal government, only Asbury Park gets three days off in the month of February. They get Lincoln, Washington, and presidents, which president is? Lincoln and Washington. I mean, why don't you work on something that's important? That's two days' pay. That's extra. I mean, I don't blame the employees. I blame management when it comes to that. How dare you have three days off for the same thing? One day is enough. As it is, they only work, what, 17 days in February? Or 16, I think. I'm not sure. But come on, something's got to be done here. Somebody's got to answer these phones to get information. We're concerned citizens. You ought to take care of us. We're the only ones that care about what's going on, the people in this room. And the other thing is, I don't know if this came up. I think it did come up, though, on that building that they want to build on Memorial Drive. You have to have setbacks. You can't have that building on the sidewalk, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, Rita, thank you. And if you're having a problem with people picking up the phone, you should call the city manager. You can go to the city portal and file a complaint, and you'll get a response within 24 hours. You can call 7915, even though it's not a city phone number, it's my phone number, which you call me at least once a week, and I always pick up and I'll pursue it.
I know.
I know, but, okay, but if you bring problems to our attention, we can solve them. So you just brought a problem to our attention, we'll look into it, but you don't have to wait for a council meeting. Now, as far as like the holidays, I'm going to say like...
Well, we're looking to the holidays.
Okay, well, I'm going to embarrass you a little bit. Like, 20 years ago, when you were 39...
I mean, it's embarrassing that people...
20 years ago, when you were 39 and you were a city employee, you got the same holidays off. So, yeah.
They stopped in 1971. That's when President's Day. So they've been getting paid all this time.
Thank you, Rita. Please, let us know about the problems. If we know about problems, we can fix them. Same as people address the problems with Memorial Drive, we can look at it. Thank you. Carrie?
Carrie Butch, 500 Dale Lake Drive. I used to live in this neighborhood, so I'm so excited that you guys are fighting this. I think it's a great thing. So you have my, if you need me, you have me for anything. But this brings up, this 1201 memorial project brings up the fact that I, I don't know, I heard anecdotally it was originally going to be 60 units, and then for affordable housing, it became X amount more units. I start to think, how many units have been built in all the redevelopment areas that we have in Asbury Park? We don't have a big picture of that. So when I look at the waterfront, how much is built out right now? Is it a quarter of what we were, what we're supposed to be getting? So I think that when we're adding more units to different projects, we should be taking everything into consideration. So that leads me to my request. Can we have Joe Marazidi, who's one of the best redevelopment attorneys in the state of New Jersey, a teacher at Blaustein, right, school? Can he tell the community where we're at with redevelopment? Can we have a public forum, ask questions, and really get a picture of what's happening in Asbury Park? Because it's changing rapidly, and when we negotiate one little thing over here, we find out, you know, I don't know, does the sewer have the capacity for the amount that we've promised? It feels like we're building so fast. I want to negotiate, and I want to build affordable housing. We should be working on keeping it and keeping people here in addition. So I'm glad that you guys are working on all of that, but can we get a big picture? I don't think any of us have a picture of what the amount of redevelopment neighborhoods or plans we have in the city and what it's going to look like when it gets built out. Because that's my concern when I heard about the Memorial Drive. And I also, I don't know, I heard a rumor, it was purchased in an auction for $1 million, and it was a $5 million. It was owned by the state of New Jersey. And so, could the city have bought that and actually put a good 30 or 60 units of really nice affordable housing in ourselves? But instead, like, what's going on that we don't have that kind of foresight and that kind of vision? We're not, you know, envisioning and doing it ourselves. I have asked a lot of you for this forum. Bring in your redevelopment attorneys who have made a tremendous amount of money on the city of Asbury Park in the last 20-plus years. Let us have a public forum. Tell us where we're at with redevelopment, and tell us what it's going to mean as I invest... You know, I've stayed here, I'm investing in my community. What is it going to mean? What am I investing in? What have I agreed to stay for? What is it going to look like? So, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Some of your questions, can the sewer plant handle the capacity if the city's entirely built out? Absolutely, yes. Study has been done, so we can share that study. You're close as far as the waterfront redevelopment, about a quarter, so there's about 800 built, and there's like 3,200 were proposed, so you're right about 25%. The building at 1201 Memorial was owned by the state of New Jersey. It was supposed to go to the Board of Education through the school thing where Neptune, Long Branch built all new schools. Asbury Park did nothing, so eventually the state put it out to public bid. The city was going to throw in a bid. This is back when the city was still on transitional age, so we didn't have the type of money. And so it was sold. So myself and the rest of the council not wanting to leave a dollar on the table, okay, state of New Jersey, you sold this building so good, it's so longer tax-exempt, who'd you sell it to and for how much so we can put it back on the tax rolls? Two years of questioning. You know what the answer was? We're negotiating with a high bidder. Think of that. Think of that answer. And that's the answer I got many times from the state of New Jersey. How do you negotiate with a high bidder? He's the high bidder. He bids something, you take his money. So, I mean, you talk to your state representatives about that, and they weren't in office at that time. So that part's there. Joe Marazidi only does the waterfront as far as the redevelopment attorney. No, Carrie, same as I cut off. Peter, you're done.
Okay.
Okay, so Joe Marazidi only does the waterfront. You know, as well as I know, as well as most people in this room know, it was a deal in 2002, and the waterfront does not have to provide any affordable housing. What they have to do is pay money in lieu of affordable housing when they hit certain numbers. It was first when they first started, they had to pay like $800,000, then $500,000, then when they hit 300 units, a million, 600 units, a million, which we just got the check for four months ago. When they finish with the fourth Avenue project, they'll hit the 900 units, will be in total to another million, and that's 1,200, then 1,500, but they do not have to provide any affordable housing. Is it a dumb law? Yeah, but it's a law that we can't get out. And as much as everybody says, "We'll get a new lawyer," you know, Raymond Burr can't get us out of it. So, I mean, it is what it is. So I hope I answered most of your questions. If not, please give me a yell, and I can answer the rest of them.
I'm asking for that public forum, John.
Okay. Good.
Not seeing any.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now closed to the public. We are on to the minutes. I have the Municipal Council Executive Meeting minutes of February 9th, 4:00 p.m. The Municipal Council Regular Meeting minutes of February 9th, 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion? Move it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember... Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to individual resolutions. We have Resolution 2022-121, a resolution approving special events.
Where did I break that?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore. Special event.
Yes. I guess this part of the meeting is important. I don't know.
Resolution 2022-122, a resolution approving the payment of bills.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 22123, a resolution amending the temporary budget appropriations for the 2022 budget.
Move it. Second.
Melody, I just wanted to make a comment. I spoke to the CFO, and she was going to update this. I just want to make sure that the numbers are correct, so...
I'm just trying to correct some numbers in the resolution to make sure that we are on the same. If we can just adopt this, and if we need to just make a note with the CFO to correct it if we need to for our next meeting. Thank you.
Did I have a motion and a second?
Yes, you had a motion and a second. I think Amy and I.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22124, a resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to enter into a lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
No.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22125, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the Kennedy Park concession.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22126, a resolution authorizing the purchase of RBC fiberglass rods needed at the sewer plant.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22127, a resolution authorizing the replacement of the electrical control cabinet at Asbury Avenue and Memorial Drive.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22128, a resolution authorizing a pilot study for bacteria treatment at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22129, a resolution authorizing the purchase of traffic light controllers.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22130, a resolution authorizing an application to the Complete Streets Technical Assistance Program.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22131, a resolution to back bill sewer charges on various accounts.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22132, a resolution to refund overpaid property taxes for a property located at 428 Main Street, Block 2506, Lot 10.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
A resolution to cancel pilot billing, Block 2509, Lot 1, for a property located at 630 Bangs Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22134, a resolution approving appointments to the mayor's wellness committee,[1603.87]